We'll call this special city council meeting workshop to order. Number one, public comments. Anybody, do we have any? Nope. All right, we're good. Number two, Bridge Engineer Chris Harland is here to discuss the Cottonwood Bridge project. Chris, if you'll take a seat up there at the very front, please, sir.
I brought some plans with me if anyone wants to look at them. Basically, my, I guess the biggest thing to discuss with you all is the environmental documents. As far as we know, have been accepted by everyone. They will be sent out for signatures. That will go around and get everybody's signature, NEPA, and for our field division engineer, all of our central office people as well. Once we get all signatures in, we'll start the right-of-way process. Generally, the right-of-way process, we generally put in for about a year. Well, I guess I should back up. Once we get all signatures, we have a public meeting, which the public meeting will probably be December, more than likely be January. The next process is then starting right-of-way, starting purchasing right-of-way. Right-of-way generally, we allow for a year. If we can get everyone on board and there's no holdups, we can, might can do it in six months. If not, a year it is. And once all the right-of-ways are purchased, next start your utilities. Another, we allow for a year for your utilities as well. Once again, if we can get everybody on board, we can do it in six months. Once that's done, it's up for letting, once your utility is moved. There's one thing, if we can get everybody on board, get right-of-way purchase, get utilities, it's scheduled for, to be led in 2016. If we can get everything done before that, I don't see why it wouldn't be let before that. That's based on, sure, right-of-ways purchase and getting utilities. If we don't have any money, I'm sure, with all the negative tension that this project has garnered, there will be some money somewhere to get this started in 2015, if we can get everything done by then. But right now, it's scheduled for 2016, which that's fiscal year, could be the end of 15, or more than likely in 2016, actual fiscal year 2016. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Questions for anybody on, has the scope of the project changed from, I mean, obviously it's been evolving through the years. I mean, has it changed since the last time we, you weren't here last time to give a presentation, but for others? I guess one of the questions that always gets asked is, well, what's it gonna look like? How big is it gonna be? It's gonna be 16 lanes or four lanes?
It's gonna be four lanes. The scope, as far as I know, hasn't changed. It's, the actual bridge is supposed to start about 30, 40 feet east of Seventh Street, and it'll carry to the, it'll be just a little bit shorter than, it'll be just shorter where the bridge is now, maybe about 20 feet short, but it'll be, instead of having, you know, where it comes up the hill and then kind of flattens out, it'll be just a steady grade.
So the elevation's all coming up?
Yes, yes. And as far as the roadway, I think that was a question someone had asked me earlier, the roadway portion starts just east of 12th Street. So it'll, instead of going down, and it goes down quite a bit, it'll, the roadway from where it is now to where it will be, and some portions will be up close to eight, nine feet. So it'll be significantly higher, and then, of course, there'll be ditches, and most of it'll be covered in butter.
So it'll be four lanes all the way to 11th Street?
Um, that will still need to be talked about, 'cause right now, it's, it can be four lanes, but it's just two wide lanes now, so that still needs to be discussed on how we wanna do that. The bridge will be four lanes, for sure.
Or maybe in three lanes? It just seems abrupt to have it four lanes and go right back into two lanes again when you decide.
Well, like I said, the width of the road now can handle four lanes. It's just, it's gonna be almost that same width, it's just striped for two lanes. So it's not gonna be any less wide or more wider. It's, like I said, it's capable of handling four lanes now, it just doesn't, it just striped for two lanes. So it's gonna be revocably at same width. I think it's gonna be pushed a little bit to the south, maybe five or 10 feet or so.
I think one thing that's great for being a city councilman here is that we get blamed for the failure of the bridge and/or its non-construction start dates, and not your fault, I mean, or our fault, but the, obviously, it's a budgetary issue, but do you, do you have within your arsenal? I think one thing we, it's always good for us to be able to get as much information out there, whether it's, and one of the easiest ways for us is a pretty picture, if you will, whether, doesn't have to be a schematic, but I don't know if you guys have a flyby image or something, something that we can put on our website that enables us to kind of throw out there to folks to let them see the project and get excited about it.
I don't know if we do as of now, but it can be something that I can request from our, from our.
Yeah, even just a rendering of some type that we could, that we could throw on the website that, you know.
That's a good idea, Trey.
Because it's, because we get hit with this question daily, sometimes more than daily. Hey, when do you guys come build the bridge up?
Well, that, as of right now, I don't believe we have that, but that is something I can ask.
We do have an aerial that at least shows the difference of the length of it, and I think that's, it strikes a good point to people to show width and length of it. One of the concerns that we saw on a, on a website today was that it wasn't going to be elevated. You've confirmed that it would be elevated, and that hopefully will protect us from what we've seen in historical floodings, is that we elevated in between five to eight feet, depending on, you know, it's at least five feet elevated. The drawing that we have now, we'll go ahead and put that up this week, and it at least shows an impact. I haven't seen a rendering of the architectural features.
I have not either. And actually, I saw, I don't know if it's the same drawing you're talking about when I was coming in downstairs as a picture. It's, it's actually, that's pretty much exactly what it is, with that picture.
Can we have a timeline as well with that? 'Cause you can see pictures, but people are gonna still have questions as to, I mean, he broke down the timeline. If we could just have a road bridge timeline with that link, I think that would be, you know, something really short, people just look at it and they get the steps and what not.
And like I said, this, right-of-way is not a science. It's, we go out and we purchase, so sometimes it takes a little longer. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of things and a lot of historical stuff that we have to purchase, so if some people put up a fight, I mean, and so.
Well, if you can put a range and just say, hey, this is just, you already said six months to a year, six months to a year, and that's.
We will do our best. The problem on right-of-way, what he means is that if a property owner decides to take this to court, there goes a year. I mean, it can, it will be a year. So if I say 2015, and it doesn't happen until 2016, y'all get blamed. I mean, that, and so I, if I can at least maybe say that y'all buy right-of-way, maybe I'll do it in years.
Yeah, generally, we.
Anything, I think more information, the better.
Sure.
And say there's a range, you know, this is barring legal issues and whatnot, but we get a lot of questions about when is this gonna happen, a lot of misinformation and so.
And as of now, we can blame Jeff and Mary?
I would, I would. They're not here.
Not here?
It's probably their fault.
Yes. What is the, what is the actual construction time? Are you guys estimating?
Um.
'Cause that'll be the next issue, you know, how are you?
Just guessing, we haven't set that in stone yet, but just guessing, I'd say anywhere from 250 days to a year.
Okay. It's a big bridge.
That is.
I mean, it is. People need to know that, that it's a big project.
A lot of dirt to move in there.
Yes, it's a whole lot of field to bring in.
You said in 2016, something about lead?
Lead. That's what we'll put out for bid.
Oh, for bid, okay. So really, this would be 2017 pretty easily?
Hopefully. We're hoping not. We would like to provide some good news with this project, but like I said, if the process gets stalled somewhere, then it could be.
If Councilmember Z's small car falls through it, it'll probably get started earlier.
Any other questions for Mr. Harland? Yeah, we're not going back. It's your fault, just remember that.
It's almost her real job.
Chris, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, item number three, discussion regarding agenda items, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna have Serena talk to us about the meter AMI MR thing and brag about her and Kim.
For how long?
Oh, you've got two minutes.
Okay, two minutes on that. If you can recall back in June, June 21st, you allowed this city to take a, an RFP out for automatic meters. You also did this a couple of years ago in an effort to change over from the meters that we currently have over to automatic meters. As you probably know from OGNE and other organizations that have been doing this for years, moving over to what we could call a smart reading system. The system that's been proposed is not a drive-by system, it is a fixed base system. On July 4th, we placed our article in the newspaper, we've set out our bid, and we received six bid proposals. At that time, we chose our top two vendors in an effort to discuss with those vendors what is the best fit and most effective way to implement this program. From that, we made a, there was a selection committee comprised of the line maintenance, supervisor, finance, Myers Engineering, myself, and the director of GPWA. From there, we looked at everything that you could possibly look at, from the size of the lid boxes, to the boxes, to the type of meter, to how does it fit with our software, to how does this support our customers. So looking at all of that, we were making a recommendation for Census. What an automatic meter system does for our customers is it allows the customer, for example, we could set up every two days to run an exception report. We could set that report to say, who's used 1,000 gallons in the past day? And whoever that red flag is, we could actually call them, call Ms. Susie up and say, hey, your garden hose is on, or did you fill up your swimming pool? Or whatever it might have been that can use. It allows our customers that sometimes have a leaky toilet, a running faucet outside, and they get hit with a $400 water bill, they can't pay it, we have to put them on payment plans, or if you can hypothetically imagine that we have a meter reader company that doesn't read the meters accurately, this will stop that and allows for an automatic read system. On the financial, so our customers, what we've seen in other communities, and I have to tell you, the selection committee went on a field trip, and I have never seen so much research done on picking the right company for this project, and enough research to teach us all about automatic meters. So I have to tell y'all that I did not go on that road trip.
Really?
Terrible, it was terrible. I really wanted to, but they bought Yoohoo's and Twinkies and went on their road trip and went and talked to communities that implemented this. So for our customers, we think it's a great deal. The finance office, the billing specialists here often, and it's heartbreaking, it really is, when you have someone on a fixed income that comes in and they've got a $300, $400 bill and they can't pay it, this is our way to alleviate that pain for the customer. The dollar amount is at 1.154 million. On the return on investment, we're looking at a four-year return on investment. The way that works is we have meters in the ground that are 30, 40 years old. As they get older, they don't turn anymore, and so that means that you'll see a bright green lawn, and it says that they're consuming the minimum amount of water, that, you know, at 2,000 gallons. And we, we know that the meters aren't working after sampling meters. So what's happening is that we are charging other customers for basically other people's usage, if that makes sense. It's not a very equitable system to do that to our customers. So this will accurately measure to the toilet flush. I'm not gonna tell you that we know what time you go to the bathroom, but I'm just saying that we could figure that out. So we can see what peak usage is, we can see, you know, all of those things, we can see when usage is, not who's in the shower, we cannot see that. We can, we can take a look at usage. So we think that helps the customers. Another thing that this helps on our annual budget, currently, we have budgeted over $30,000 for a meter reading company. We will no longer use that contract. Instead, there will be a line item for around $16,000 that does all of the maintenance, everything with it, for the software, the, everything with it, so we'll be reducing our 30,000, 30 and something thousand, 32,000 contract down to 16,000. So we'll see a line item difference. The other difference that it means is that we have an individual that does rereads. It doesn't mean that we will never go to someone's house again to read it. You can still, on these meters, do a manual read, you can still lift the box and take a read from it, and it doesn't mean that we won't do rereads. It doesn't mean, you know, someone can park their truck over one of these and it's not gonna pick it up. So there is possibilities of how to do rereads. What it does is we don't have as many, and we have an individual named ET that does a great job doing rereads, he will do a lot less, it's less wear and tear on vehicles, it's less time and it frees him up to do other items within water. So we're excited about that. We also will be able to salvage the current meters that we have. What's great about them is they have grass. We anticipate about a $20,000 return on the salvage within that first time. The contract has not worked out all of its kinks, there's been some of that, this has happened all pretty quick in the past week. Randall will be working tomorrow with Census to finalize that contract, and we hope to have a signature by the end of this week with approval tonight for the mayor to sign. With that being said, we see a start date, they will mobilize immediately, and we will believe that by February 1st, the first meter will go in the ground. They have 120-day turnaround to get all those meters in the ground. It's something that you won't really see, they're like meter ninjas. They come in, they get on the property, and it's like five minutes. One thing that we asked them to do is take a picture of the meter, hopefully with the house in the background, it won't work out perfectly. When I've done one of these projects before in a previous city, people will say, well, that wasn't my meter read. When they switched it, they, you know, didn't do it right, and so we'll try to alleviate some of those concerns. Census is here today, we have, Russ Smith is on the right side, David Overfield in the middle, and Jeff Crowsey on the left. They have been an exceptional team, they come with exceptional references from across this great state and others, so we're excited to work with them. We, it doesn't mean that this is gonna be perfect, there's always some little kinks, we learned that we might have some meters we didn't know about, I hate to say, but that does happen when you have 3,800 meters out there. So we've, we've done a diligent effort over the last six months to meter all of our water. And what that means is that on city property, sometimes we'll have a meter hookup, but we didn't, I mean, we'll have a water hookup, but we didn't have a meter there, and the best way to count for your water, of course, is to put a meter there and read it. It doesn't mean we're billing ourselves, it means that we're accounting for our water. Currently, we report to the state about a 30% water loss. What that basically means is you take what your water plan is producing versus what you're selling, and what's that difference? 30% loss is high. Average within the state of Oklahoma should be 10 to 15%. The common rule of thumb is if you're over 15%, it's too high, if you're under 10%, you're lying. And so therefore, we are trying to range to get to that 10 to 15%, and we do believe that this will help us from not losing water through meters. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have, or anything that you have of the vendor.
Just a fast question. Will, will the, will our end consumer be able to, I mean, very similar, maybe the Census guys will, they have a better snapshot of this, but will our, will our end consumer be able to like log into a system, to be able to see their usage online? Is that something that we can do in the future?
We can do that in the future. Right now, it's been proposed at an $18,000 package. We had that originally in there. What we learned from the other communities is that their users were not high-techies and weren't using that system, they could see a login. Typically, what we experience are users calling us, or they come up here and say, run my report, there's no way I use this much water, run the report for us. We're gonna test that, because that was a little bit of heartburn for me, was that allowing those users. I'm not sure that our community, and we have the funding on the, I'll get to the funding in a second, I forgot that part, we have the ability to add that if we need to, we really do. It wouldn't make a difference if us choosing another vendor. So $18,000.
A year?
A year, correct? Some, well, I'm gonna say 18,000. 18,000 allow our users to do it. If we see a demand for that, but right now, we've never had a demand for it, but it might be something that we could look at.
Well, and I'm just thinking, you know, utilities, like OGNE's smart system, and, you know, being able to log on, you can see your daily usage and.
And you're paying for it somewhere. I mean, you know, you're paying for it. What we did to finance this, so if I can brush up your memory on that, 1.2 million is what we put in the budget for it. Now, that was done whenever we refinanced the line from Langston, we didn't wanna pay for two different loans in an effort to consolidate fees whenever you go out for loans, we put that together and added 1.2. So your, your budget was 1.2 million this year, we came in at 1.154. But I will tell you, when I talked about those ancillary items that appear, there is, there's, we need a little bit for contingency. There's gonna be issues that we see, there's gonna be something that we missed, and maybe more lid boxes that fit right, or what are, those are like, I, $5 apiece, or whatever they are, but there's gonna be some, some possible spending.
What are the new meters, what is, what's the warranty on the new meter system? Is it 20 years?
20.
They have a 20-year warranty on our product, so the meters themselves, depending on which model you choose, did they design? I-Pearl, so the I-Pearl has 20 years, first year, first 10 years 100%, second 10 prorated, but it doesn't prorate down to zero, so even in the 19th year, you're still getting some of your investment as an exchange.
So that's, that's on the meter itself, it's us to do the install on the meter, right?
The accuracy is guaranteed, on the meter guaranteed at 20 years.
I'd like to let him be on the finance committee after we start getting accurate meter.
Well, on the, and a big push for us was to go for the 20-year meter. One thing it guarantees us, when I talk about that return on investment of your initial capital, you know, a four-year return, you've gotta think that what this will do, the revenue that it does create, and I wanna be very clear about this, it's not, it was revenue that was lost for the past 20 years from not reading meters accurately. And what you will experience is that you're gonna have some customers that have an increase, you're gonna have some that don't, that don't have an increase in their water bill, but what they're gonna say is, you know, like, these meters are not reading right because it was an increase. It was actually that we gave them free water for a very long time. That's, that's what it ends up really being. So you'll see a little bit of that. When I talk about the 20-year warranty, what I love about that from a finance standpoint is that four years, you paid your investment, years four through 20 is still accurately reading. The I-Pearl meter is a non-moving part meter, and that does differentiate from some of these other proposals. And we debated that, we really, really had had very in-depth conversations with other companies, with other vendors, with other cities, to talk about what that means. What that means on a non-moving part is that the technology has advanced so far that if you have a moving part, what happens? It starts, those are the things that break. And this has been a proven product, why would we go back and put into the ground the exact same thing that we already had that we've experienced difficulty with? And when it measures down to the flush, I mean, it's pretty amazing. So we like the 20-year warranty, we hope to not ever use that warranty, of course, but.
So I've got a question. So on that 30, no, $16,000 of maintenance, is that our labor, or is that AMI maintenance even?
I'm sorry, the 16,000 is for Census to maintain.
Okay.
Not, yes, to, maintenance software, and I may, Russ Martin, if you wouldn't mind answering that question, what all goes on that 16,000 while I flip through and find it?
See, it's a hosted, it's a hosted site, so everybody in, the city hall can log on. It takes care of the maintenance through software, through servers, everything through that whole year. So if there's any updates or anything in that server, that 16,000.
Is there any physical maintenance? Like, you know, if there's a box there, somebody has to go in and say, the box is not functioning or something?
Yeah, so that's all included. Our hosted data centers, we actually have dual physically diverse locations that are hardened to your class four facilities. That means they have dual energy coming in, dual telecom. Of course, the typical data, you know, situation where you have dual air conditioning and all that, and so our team, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, are there at the facility, so if there's an issue with, you know, runtime or uptime, we actually have a committed uptime in the contract. Our team is there to take care of it.
Now, where are you guys located? Where would this team be?
So the two data centers, one's in Boise and one's in Raleigh, North Carolina, Boise, Idaho, sorry, throw those out there, but I recently discovered that every town exists somewhere else, you know. So the access is via web browser, so it's browser-based, so one of the things that's really nice about it in this day and age is most people have a lot of experience with it, it's very intuitive, Internet Explorer, so it's very quick and easy to learn how to use it, how to find the information. The system will self-train a user, if you mouse over something, it'll tell you what it is, and either reports all have very descriptive icons, so if you go to a report, tells you what to do, what to enter into the report to get what you want back.
I guess my.
Your question is, but Russ, where do you live?
I live at Sorbonne Mill and Penn.
That's what's important to us. That, that's, that was critical to us, is that we have Russ that is the project manager, highly capable, and comes with great references, and he's within 20, 30 minutes. Can you get here in 20 minutes? That, that's.
I would love to see it.
We'll get your tag at the end of the meeting.
So he's the guy who do the fiscal, like, say, runs over the meter, well, we need that replaced.
He's our point. Boise, Idaho is not our point of attack for that, it is Russ.
Will these meters be similar to rural water district? Are you gonna have a thing on top of the meter?
Yes, yeah, they will.
That's what transmits the signal.
And that means basically you have to make sure you inform the public, do not take your line warmer over the top of it. And we hit it just before the city, ours is told, if you even get close to it, it will maybe mess it up.
We have a, when we do the kickoff meeting, we have a PR kit that we give to the city, and we'll address that. Plus, this one will be pretty much almost flush. I went around and looked at some of your lids, so it just sticks up about that much. About, well, kinda what you have now, and some of the touch reads, that's the same height.
We're out south in Guthrie, but the other just barely.
Yeah. What color is the box?
Boxes are in the ground, they're black. Lids are black, our current lids are black.
I mean, they stick up, or they're kinda, they're flush? Okay.
'Cause you wouldn't believe how many people can't find theirs.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Serena or our three visitors? Okay, any other questions regarding agenda items? Anything else that, out there?
There's a gentleman item about the rural business for Crowthers. That is the USDA revolving grant that the LCDC manages for us. If you can remember, a couple months ago, there was a $10,000 one for Willoughby's. So this is a grant that we do in an effort to support our local businesses to do facade treatments, et cetera. He has requested a 14, what is it, 14136 at a 4.5% interest rate, and the staff would support for LCDC to continue to manage that grant and allow this for a beautification effort in the downtown area.
He's still.
And he may not be able to be here at 7, Crest Building. May not be able to be here at 7, so I wanted to, if y'all have any questions while he's here.
I have one other question for the, for the airport board. I know we have, tonight, we have on the agenda for ground lease.
Yes.
When's the last time, maybe Randall can answer, when's the last time that we did kind of a generalized study of ground lease rates within the area?
About a year ago.
About a year ago.
Just prior to myself getting.
Are we, are we on the high side on our ground lease rate, or we? And here, and the reason I've heard some grumbling that we're high on the high end of ground.
I think we're actually really low.
Yeah.
And a lot of it has to do with the utilities that we do provide and our location and area. I think that we're undervalued where we currently are, the board's currently trying to structure it, so we're leasing out lots rather than just square footage of the building.
Of the building itself.
Exactly. And whereas the lot, I mean, that's the usable area of, that's being taken up by a hanger being there.
Right, as opposed just to the first.
Correct, correct. I think the grumblings are, it's not the way that we've always done it, and it's, our leases used to be five cents this way, you know, and now we go to 710, and this is outrageous, but I mean, it's, it's different.
You can get it. Somebody calling about it? No, I just, like I said, I'm just curious of the last time we, just, if you think about it, I'd just be curious to see what's on the other.
I'll try to find some numbers, you gotta call around to the other airports.
I mean, don't make a huge difference.
Thanks. Any other questions on agenda items or any of the other stuff that's in? Uh, item number four, request for future items of discussion, anything we couldn't get on the agenda, anybody wants to bring up? That was here on time?
I was telling you, next week we are inviting, I'm sorry, not next week, our next council meeting, we are inviting, we would, as a city, like to thank our volunteers that serve on boards and commissions and serve the animal shelter. There's a, there's two gals that show up every Saturday morning and work at the animal shelter. It's absolutely unbelievable commitment for us to do the mission work of, of the city, um, we couldn't do it without the volunteers. We would like to, in the workshop next, uh, next time we meet, November, somebody called 15, 19th, November 19th, um, we'd like to do a little reception for them, we'll be inviting all of our boards and commissions and, and try to, um, thank them for, for what they do for us. Some of y'all even serve on some of those boards and commissions, so you don't count, but, um.
Yeah.
Um, but we're, we're, I have some, some gifts, a little gift for them, and we'd like to present them in the mix. I know, we're sweet, we're kind, and they have to do with Guthrie and they're local, and it's, um, gonna be pretty neat. So we're gonna do a little reception about 6:30. Next, uh, workshop, I've, if I can refresh your memory, every month I'm gonna have a department head give a rundown and we'll have economic development, uh, next time, and then hopefully thank all of our volunteers, just let you know.